Commissioners, Community Development Subcommittee. It is May 6th, 2021, getting started five minutes late at 6:31. If you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll start this meeting off with public comment. Please raise your hand in the Zoom window if you'd like to give public comment. Seeing none, we will get to the issue at hand. PI development throughout Radnor Township. Kevin, I don't know if you're comfortable jumping in. I'm kind of putting you in the spot and I will admit for the public that I have not pre-gamed this with you. So I apologize for putting you on the spot, but if you could give us kind of a rundown of what the PI zoning district is. What's special about it? And if you've got any comments, we'd be grateful to hear them.
Sure. Well, the PI District is also known as our planning institutional district. In essence, allows for what we're accustomed to seeing are schools. There are a few homes for the age and things like that. But primarily, it's all of the parcels in Radnor that are zone PI are taken up by schools, the higher education schools. For the most part, Villanova's, Eastern Cabrini, Valley Forge. We do have that parcel on South Roberts Road that was the school for the children. So they're mixed in there. We don't have one large block of PI zoning, as was traditional with the zoning districts. They're scattered throughout the township from that standpoint.
And I just want to clarify, you said home for the age. That is, if I'm remembering correctly, the exact language of our ordinance. I know that we would probably call them continuing care facilities, retirement care. Yeah, retirement facilities and more.
Yes, there's, there's a few things that fall in there. I'm flipping to the section now in terms of what is allowed in there. You have as a matter of right, college, private or parochial elementary or secondary school or other educational institution for academic instruction, convent, monastery, church, or similar religious institution. Student infirmary, including rectory or parish house, provided rectory or parish house contains not more than one dwelling unit. And it's not to include a business or trade school, dance studio, or similar use. So all of those would be permitted as a matter of right in the district. They come in, they submit their development plan. Or if they're taking over an existing facility, they would just work through whether it's a building permit or possibly any grading permit applications through that standpoint. If it's scraping it and starting all over, then that would be in front of the commissioners for a subdivision land development review and go through that process as any other development would go through. Other institutional uses similar to those.
Can I ask a question? So when you say scraping it and then it would have to come before. So suppose there's a school there now and they tore the whole school down. Would that, is that considered scraping them? Would they still have to come forward?
Yes. So if they kind of really disturb the earth to impact the building footprint would be the threshold at which somebody would need to come into a non-residential property, would come in in front of the board for a land development approval. So whether it's an addition like we saw with Radnor High School or if they completely just leveled the site and rebuild from scratch would also be a land development application.
Thanks.
So part B of the use regulations is any institutional use similar to those above. But qualified as a museum or institution for the home for children, the aged indignant, handicapped, mental or health center, convalescent home, nursing home, or similar health facility. That would require a special exception from the zoning hearing board. And then again, depending what they're doing on the site could be in front of the board for land development approval as well. So those are the key uses that are permitted in the institutional, as you noted, or as I noted rather, residential, other than dwelling unit for like a parish house or a rectory would be the only type of residential use that we would expect to see. PI would not allow any kind of residential subdivisions that would require relief from the zoning hearing board or from this body amending the code to either rezone it or allowing new uses in the PI District.
We've had a couple of applications in the PI District recently. I know there's two in the first ward. One is the Eastern University Site. That's in PI, is it not, right now anyway?
Yes.
And another is Valley Forge Military Academy has an, I'm going to assume, an equitable agreement of sale with Rockwell to construct a retirement facility, continuing care facility on their campus. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's a special exception that would go to the zoning hearing board. We, at least until they come up with land development, don't really play a role in that. Is that right?
You can play a role in it. Any application in front of the zoning hearing board, the Board of Commissioners are a party to. Whether you choose to or not, most of the applications in front of the zoning hearing board, the Commissioners don't take any action on. There have been a few lately that you've both supported and opposed. The application for Valley Forge, I believe, is coming up either the May or the June meeting for them to figure out what they're doing. They submitted an application some months ago. It's kind of been sitting there with an indefinite extension. The board, I have 60 days to schedule an appeal in front of the zoning hearing board. Prior to that, they submitted a indefinite extension. We're not going to let it just kind of sit out there. So we're calling them in to explain to the zoning hearing board why an indefinite or further extension is warranted. And then that will be up to the zoning hearing board, whether they want to grant that or not.
Got it. And that's a fair distinction. I was saying that we don't have a role because I was just thinking of us as the judge, the way we were in the conditional use. But of course, we can always intervene as a party.
You can intervene as a party, yes. And that's what separates the conditional use from special exception. They're very similar, both permitted. Commissioners are the kind of the judge and jury on the conditional use. The zoning hearing board are the judge and jury on the special exception and variance requests, but that is a special exception for that particular use.
Got it. And Lisa, I know you have a big PI tract in your ward.
Yeah, I do, which is, you know, something that we are concerned about in moving forward, what, you know, what's going to happen over there. I know that anyone who is asked about it or inquired or wants to take the temperature of the board on what could happen over there. They've been asked to come and do that in public and I don't think we've had anyone come forward around that yet. So, and I think the property is still, you know, in the process of, you know, being marketed for sale. So I don't know that anything has happened per se for that property at this time. I guess one of the things that, you know, I wanted to talk about, and I don't know if we talk about this in the context of the comprehensive plan that we have and do we need to update that or, you know, what we, how these two things kind of mesh. But definitely as we look at all these properties, how do we work to make sure that what comes forward on those properties is something that is of benefit to the township? How do we minimize the impacts? How do we look to control or, you know, I don't even know if that's the right word, the density of these, you know, developments and the development on these properties? And as I look at, you know, other townships where things have been developed and there have been, you know, unique types of development where things become in and they're multi-use or there's also land allocated to the township or for trails or fields or things like that. Like how do we, how do things like that? I guess my question is, how do things like that come about? And how do we look at and work with people that are coming forward to develop these properties so that there can be some things that are mutually beneficial to the township and the residents? In addition to the developers that are coming in and putting these things in there. So I guess that's one question.
I guess first, I'll answer the question, should we update our comprehensive plan? Absolutely. The municipal planning code recommends every 10 years. Our last comprehensive plan update was 2003. You know, we're not required to, it's recommended. It is a great planning tool that sets forth the direction at which the township is heading in terms of development in the various areas. So it looks at everything from utilities to natural resources, traffic, land uses, compatible land uses. That is the basis at which you then update your zoning code, your subdivision land development code. Any ordinance amendment that we enact should be generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. So obviously for comprehensive plan is old. It, it's a challenge to, you know, to work through those, those parameters, but absolutely. When you have an updated comprehensive plan and then you enact a new ordinance that is favorable to the township, otherwise we probably wouldn't enact it. It's not now much more reasonably legally defensible in those terms because it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan update is a two-year plus project, heavy citizenry, public input, public participation process. We'd have to engage a third-party consultant to start that study. But when done properly, they're very useful as a planning tool. In terms of having a PI parcel and making sure that it is developed appropriately, there's a few things that come to mind. The Commissioners are under no obligation to entertain any kind of rezoning or ordinance amendment. It is purely a legislative function. You can say, thanks, no thanks, thanks, give us more information, or this is a great idea. You can go down the road as far as you want and then call it quits and pull the plug on it. Prior to adoption, that's completely at your disposal. So the Commissioners have final say as to what ultimately could happen on there. As we've learned through the eastern parcel concern about, well, we're going to rezone this. How do we know that that's what we're going to get type of scenario? And that is true. When you rezone a parcel, first it's got to be contiguous district to something that's contiguous. You can't take. I mentioned the PI parcels are kind of these one-off parcels. It's kind of called spot zoning and it's illegal. I don't know how the parcels in Radnor got to be that way, but they are now. We couldn't take a PI zone and turn it into R5 if it's in the middle of an R1 district area. It's got to be, as we talked about the 452 South Roberts Road, I think there were three districts that were contiguous, R1, R1A, and R2. So any rezoning of that parcel would have to be one of those three or there's a claim that somebody could legally file for illegal spot zoning. So you know what you can zone and you would know what could be developed on there. Ultimately, a developer could come with a plan and say, if you rezone this, this is what I'm going to build. He gets it rezone and they come, come back in with a completely different plan. There's nothing we can do about that. You can't do contract zoning. You can't rezone it with conditions that they build it a certain way. That's the contract zoning. You can rezone something, understanding that any of the allowable uses in that district could be built. There's another option that what we did with the CICD ordinance is that you look at new uses and create an ordinance amendment that would apply to the district as a whole. So any parcel within that district, when we did that with the 145 King of Prussia, the PLU, or I'm sorry, the PLO district regulations, where we did an amendment that applies to multiple parcels. It's not just one parcel it's affecting, but it could apply to multiple parcels. The concern there is unintended consequences. If there's something that you have in mind, you know, that could then development could happen on various other parcels throughout the township if it's meets the underlying parameter. So when you're talking about how do we get these amenities and things like that? If it's not in the code, we can't require it. Any ordinance amendment in terms of new uses and things like that, we would want to look at those types of things and make sure that any kind of ordinance amendment for new uses would include those types of community facilities and benefits for Radnor as a whole.
Commissioner, if I, if I can add in, and I agree with Kevin 100%, it is time to update our comprehensive plan. The Commissioners on a lot of developments that have been coming in have been saying they don't like the density or they don't like X, Y, and Z. So your, your land use plan is what's going to dictate what you want. And as Kevin noted, when you update your comprehensive plan, the things that you're looking for as well as all the public input, and it's usually a very big cross-section of the township, you know, institutions, residents, business owners, all that good stuff. You, that is the basis. And then in your zoning, you can adjust your land development to your land use to the way you want it. And our subdivision land development ordinance is, you know, that too is sorely in need of an update and should be done. So it jives with a zoning ordinance because right now there are, you know, Kevin and I have had talks, there's pieces that don't quite, don't quite work together, even though they should. So and to look at things comprehensively is really, is my suggestion is how you want to do it, right? I don't think you want to look at very specific things until you look at the very comprehensive, look at the township through the comp plan and then see, and you'll see how the various zoning districts are interacting, like Kevin had noted. So Concordia is in for a map amendment. They bought up to an R2 district and that's, that's what they're using. But my suggestion is we do update all these things and look at things on a bigger scale comprehensively, not just open space, not just trails, not just recreation, your density, traffic, all those good things. Because the township is different than when these ordinances were written. There is no doubt, right? It's different now.
You say different, Steve. How so?
I think it's more, a little bit more populous. I think there's one big, so I grew up in Bow Prey and Bow Prey is, for the past several years, has been under quite a bit of redevelopment, right? So houses are bought, they're knocked down and new homes, infill building is taking place. Land is so valuable and there's not a lot of open land, but infill building is huge all over. Because the lot is, the lot alone is worth more than the lot in the house because I can buy this lot. I'll buy this property with the house for $500,000, knock down the home, put up my new home and it sells for 1.2, 1.4, whatever it may be. I think those are things you have to look at because you have, people get concerned with gentrification of neighborhoods, right? That's, that's an issue to think of. And do you want to, I don't know that you can even control that, but I think you should look at things like infill building. So what were neighborhoods of very similar homes years ago are no longer like that. They're very mixed because there's these huge homes, there's the homes that were there, you know, prior to the infill building. I think we can all agree there's more traffic in the township than there was 20 years ago. And I think that's pretty across the board. We know stormwater has changed, that's for sure. Again, development is usually, and traditional arguments, but this word development on the whole is good for stormwater management because it includes stormwater management. The older homes don't. So there's one of your trade-offs in the infill building. You get a new home, but the new home has stormwater management. The old homes don't. There's just a lot to think of, I think, in terms of what the township was in 2003 versus 2021. Still a great Radnor township. A lot of us grew up in or live in, but it is different and I'm not saying for the worse or for the better, it's just different. Change, time marches on.
Could I go back, Kevin, to something that you said? Once you change the zoning, in spite of whatever we're promised by the developer, we don't have an ability to enforce that if they want to withdraw their land development application or if they just go away and somebody else comes in. I agree that certainly there is a buy right plan that exists once the land is rezoned and we would not be able to prevent a developer from building the buy right plan. I haven't seen a whole lot of buy right plans on this board or anywhere else. I feel like we at least have a mechanism. I'm asking, not telling. I'd like to get reassurance that I'm right about this, frankly. The mechanism that we have to ensure that a developer doesn't snooker us is if we rezone a property from PI to something else and then the developer, having sold us on this big, beautiful plan that they're excited about building, comes back with something that's super dense and really low-quality houses. Assuming that they are looking for discretionary waivers from the Board of Commissioners, we can simply decline to give them. And the developer would then be limited to whatever the buy right plan is for that site. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I see John Rice is on and he could probably touch a little bit more on the legal aspects of that. But yes, in that scenario, if they present a very spacious, I'll say a kind of not a cluster development, but something that, you know, let's say buy right is, you know, 40 homes and they're going to show you a plan that has 15 or 20 on there with all sorts of meadows and open space and say, this is what we're going to build. We promise. You rezone it, they come back in and then submit the 40-acre home or the 40-lot subdivision. You're stuck with that if that is buy right. If there were waivers, depending on the nature of the waivers, I don't know that you have a basis for denying it on some waiver request, you know, if it's, you know, showing improvements within 500 feet of the site versus, or, you know, plan scale size versus intersection spacing and things that are actually the nuts and bolts of the design. I think that there's probably a difference there and I'd probably defer to John on the differences and nuances of where it's something that you could deny something on and have it withstand a challenge.
Well, let me, let me just add on to what Kevin said. Waivers, depending on what they are, there's a standard in the MPC and in your ordinance to modify a SADO ordinance. So yes, you can always deny a plan for failure to comply with SADO. But some of the waivers, like showing all the features within 500 feet and things like that are typically granite unless there's a reason not to. You could technically deny a plan, but you're probably going to have a county court judge overturn that. I mean, the best way to deal with a zoning request is to have a land development plan and a zoning request go through the process almost simultaneously. Because what happens when you do that is the developers now going through the land development process, putting real money out with an engineering firm and going through planning commission reviews and county reviews with that land development plan. And then if the zoning amendment and the land development plan are approved, doesn't have to be simultaneously, it's pretty difficult for a developer then to pull from a plan that you've approved, you like, they've represented is what they're willing to do and go to something else. So that's a pretty typical procedure. Different townships do it different ways. You know, but they should try to run parallel as much as possible, assuming, you know, there's a consensus on the board that you like the plan. Hence, you like the zoning amendment because the zoning amendment is still discretionary. And you can attach, you know, conditions to the land development plan. We sort of did this with Penn Medicine when their land development plan was approved on the issue of whether or not they were going to pay taxes. That was not part of the zoning amendment, but it was part of the land development. And they put that in writing to the township. They made that offer. So there's a way to do it and stay away from contract zoning issues. And usually it means that you're going to run them both, both a land development application and a zoning amendment almost simultaneously. I do believe though, you need to update your comprehensive plan. I mean, that's the first step. You need to update your zoning ordinance too. That would be step two. SADO is a little bit more up to date. That could probably be cleaned up with, through staff amendments. But your comp plan and your zoning ordinance, your zoning ordinance is basically an ordinance that was done in the late 70s. And it's been amended over time. But I don't think there's ever been any kind of comprehensive amendment. And there's just some inherent inconsistencies. You can see where somebody did an amendment to the R6 district and it makes no sense when you look at that versus the R5. So I mean, Kevin's and Steve are, you know, aware of these issues. They deal with them on a daily basis, but really the first step with a zoning ordinance update is to do the comp plan, you know, put the, you're going to have to spend the money to bring a planner in. And, and then that planner's got at least, as Kevin said, probably a year and a half, year, year and a half to get a document together. Takes some time. And I don't know, Kevin, does Delaware County do any kind of, provide any kind of planning services?
It was recommended when we were looking at this a few years ago to engage Westchester University and their planning department for mapping and things like that. I know plenty of county agencies, planning commissions undertake those. I don't know, I haven't heard of Delaware County Planning Commission undertaking a rewrite. It's possible, but I just, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know that I've seen them do anything either, but I know that Montgomery County and Bucks County do ordinance changes. They do comprehensive plans. They can track with local municipal. I don't think Delaware County is in that. At least I haven't seen that they've been in that business, but you know, maybe things are are changing there. But there's plenty of planners that are experienced that I think we're probably all familiar with. Something that you would probably want to bid out once you define what you actually want done. But it's time to do that. It is recommended every 10 years, so.
I guess we're far beyond that if we haven't done it since 2003.
We are, we are beyond that. And you know, the plan is a plan. It's, here's what we'd like the township to look like the next 10, 20 years. Most townships don't update every 10 years. It's rare. So you're not, you know, way behind the curve. It really depends on what's going on in the community. More rural municipalities might not update them you know, for 15, 20 years. If they get hammered with a lot of development, then they're going to revisit it probably sooner. But it deals with every, every aspect of development, natural resources, transportation. There's elements, the elements that are supposed to be in a comp plan, I think are in section 301 of the MPC. So if you get your hands on that, you can see the elements that need to get addressed and you know, Radnor is a built-out community, which makes it a little bit different than a community where you might have hundreds of, you know, 50-acre tracts that have never been developed. So, but you still need to, you know, look forward and the comp plan is the tool to do it.
Sean, I have a question if I can jump in here. So I guess this is something that, that gets bid out. Do you have an estimated cost? It's a three-part question. And then approximately, how long does the process take? I'm sure there's going to be a lot of back and forth between the Commissioners and the township and all you guys. And then, then how do you handle, if there's a, I don't know how to say this, say a mad rush of developers to try to put their, get their, their, their projects in before we come up with a plan to kind of cram job, I don't want to say, but, but maybe, maybe that's the right term.
Then I'll take, I guess, all three of those and then you can jump in on it. So cost-wise, we've been budgeting or planning the budget somewhere between $200,000 to $250,000 for the comp plan update timing. You know, we kind of drive that a little bit, you know, how many public meetings do we want to have? How large is the steering committee? You know, what does the public participation process look like? Are we doing flyers? Are we doing surveys? You know, so the more public meetings, the more you're bringing the consultant back, the higher of a cost that is and the longer it takes to that out. However, you also get what you pay for. So the more input you have, the tighter the plan can be, the better community buy-in for that plan will be. So again, we, anywhere from 18 months to two years is typical for these types of things. They can stretch out well beyond that. And I've seen them done very quickly when it is just gone through and updating the demographics, you know, you're structurally good with, you know, the direction that the plan is as a built-out community with fewer, larger developmental parcels. You know, you're, you're structurally good with, you know, the direction that the plan is as a built out community with fewer developable, larger developable parcels. There may not be a desire from the commissioners to, you know, do a wholesale change. I recommend that we do. But, you know, to meet the parameters and keep it consistent, you can just go through and have an analysis done of the, the demographics, update that, update some of the land use maps. And you can probably get something done in a year, but I, I think that that would be rushing it. I think that that would be received by the public is rushing something through and I I wouldn't recommend going that route. I think, given the age of it and how much Radnor has changed over the last thirteen plus years since that was seventeen years at this point. That we should, you know, do a whole comprehensive rewrite of that. If it was a ten-year mark and we just need to update some demographics. That would be one thing, but we're, we're fast approaching the, you know, second go around of, of when this should have been done. You know, the third part of how do we prevent developers from a mad rush? The comprehensive plan has no legal binding effect on what development can and cannot occur. That's in the zoning and subdivision land development ordinances that really dictates how much can be developed and where. The comprehensive plan is just the planning tools to what we want to see and generally where we want to keep our office parks where the office park is in the PLO district. We want to keep our residential areas residential. We want to keep the agricultural security areas in the, the ag district. In the AC district. So I don't see envision much change in our land use maps and where things want to go. Again, we're, we're pretty built out in those terms. It would be looking at these one-off parcels for the PI and saying, okay, you know, what do we want to look? What is our vision for these? Should these become available? You know, what kind of zoning? We have, I'll use the four fifty-two South Roberts Road as an example. You know, we have three different adjoining districts. Where would we want to see that going? Most cases you'd probably go less dense and more dense. So it would probably stays R one versus the R one A or the R two. So I don't envision under the trigger of a comprehensive plan seeing a mad rush of developers coming in with stuff because there's, I don't see there any major wholesale changes. It would be when we are looking at doing the zoning ordinance and what does that look like and where we're going with that. And John can then touch on the pending ordinance law and how that kind of locks things in. I'm not as up to speed on that, but you know, there's, there are some protections built in for municipality that are looking to change their code and get some things on the record early.
It's Sean.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, just remember, we're talking about two different things. So a comprehensive plan doesn't have the force of law. It doesn't mandate or prevent or anything what someone can do with their property. So it's not going to trigger a mad rush with anything. It's a plan and that plan will say, this is what we would like our community to look like. This is what we would like to do in this area. You then implement that plan through a zoning ordinance. That's what controls what happens. And if you theoretically, let's say you, you get a new plan. And then you make a decision to implement some of the changes in that plan by way of a zoning ordinance enactment, that will trigger a mad rush.
Well, that's, that's what I meant, John. I mean, you know, when they, when they read the plan, they're going to obviously know that that's going to be the will of the board most likely. And that would speed up, would speed up the developing.
Going on, never seen that happen with a comp plan. It depends on the board. It depends on the township. But the comp plan itself, I mean, it, it takes a year or two to do a comprehensive zoning amendment. So, you know, during all those time periods. You know, nothing changes on the books until an ordinance is actually adopted and in place that would change somebody zoning on a particular.
Sure, John, but the purpose of doing a comprehensive plan is to get new ordinances and update ordinances and put them on the book. So so I, I think as developers are reading through this, they know what they know now as opposed to what they don't know in the future, which may increase their legal fees or their development costs. So they'd rather get that in now as opposed to roll the dice on what the, what the future looks like. That's how I, that's how I take it.
Yeah, no, you, you're right up to a point, but there's no way to stop that. Because we, you know, we're bound, we're bound by state law and to go through this procedure and there's all, always somebody that might run in, you know, at the last minute with something that you don't like, but they get it, get it in under the wire.
And you're, well, that's what I would expect to be honest with you. That would be, that would be my expectation.
Can we, I guess I have a question. So we, we came to this meeting to discuss PI, some major parcels that are either currently under negotiation for sale and we have moved on to discussing a comprehensive plan. I think that, you know, it sounds like it's absolutely the right move, but it is, it will take time to plan for the plan and then implement all of the steps that we would need to take, including, you know, public participation and real, a very thoughtful approach, which sounds like is much needed. In the meantime, we can amend the zoning ordinance. And look at the code. And I guess I'm wondering, is there any, is there a quick fix? Is there a need for a quick fix? Is there something that is pressing now that would maybe to Commissioner Farhi's point? You know, be able to make a change now that would not allow, one would not be a major cost, would not allow for you know, folks to sort of race in and, and take advantage of more lenient regulations. So I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to bring us away from comprehensive plans. Sounds like a great idea. I'm all for it. But is there anything we can do in the meantime while we're getting ready to do something that big?
Yeah, I think we, we have. I think the board took the steps to amend the open space regulations, part of the density modification as well as including open space requirement as part of some of these other non-residential residential uses. So if you're looking at a development for the aged or something along that nature that is now going to require in a PI district open space. Those are steps that this board has already taken to, to stop any of that. Anything beyond that, a development of a PI parcel. It would either be a by right educational use or, you know, somebody would be coming in front of this board for a map amendment. Or a zoning ordinance change, at which point, again, it's at your complete discretion, whether you want to entertain it or not. So you can say thanks and no thanks go away. They're, they're under no obligation to, you're under no obligation to entertain it any further. So I think the steps that protected and really kind of would slow down the kind of development has already been taken.
Excellent. Thank you.
So you think, so, and you know, I know the, you know, doing the density modification that was kind of born out of, you know, some of the concerns around these parcels and, and, you know, what we could potentially see there and how could we help? And again, I don't want to say control, but I guess it's one of the, you know, the density and what is going to go there. Is there, so you're saying there's, that is the most significant thing that we could have done in the immediate. And that there's really nothing else. Is there anything else that we could tweak or that needs to be addressed and updated to Mara's point, you know, that could help us moving forward? Or, and, and the other thing I'm going to ask, can we do the, does this, can we do the zoning ordinance piece before we do a comprehensive plan? Or you, we need to have a comprehensive plan before we look at the zoning ordinance?
Piecemealing ordinance is never the right thing to do. In this case, we would have to, and we can get away with doing a piecemeal amendment here and there without updating the comprehensive plan. But if you're going to do a wholesale rewrite of the zoning code, which it needs, you should have the comprehensive plan done first. In terms of, are there provisions that could be tweaked? Absolutely. Steve and I probably run into things in both of our codes that we kind of scratch our head at, but they're, they're on the books. It would depend, you know, are you, which district are you looking at? Is there something objectionable in terms of allowable uses would, would be the, probably the first thing I would zone in on or zero in on. Is there a use in the PI district that you're saying, you know what, we don't want to see that coming in the PI district? We have to allow for it somewhere. Maybe it's not appropriate in the PI. So let's amend it to take that out. You know, there, there's a lot of little stuff in the, in the zoning code that needs to be done. I, I'm not aware of any major, you know, we were looking at the W B O D and as an example of, of a change to allow office on the first floor because that code was written that at a time they were trying to really promote retail, non-office uses in this environment. We're seeing a lot of vacancies. So the thought was maybe we need to dial that back a little bit. You know, that, that could be a piecemeal approach that you amend that provision to allow a little bit more development in the W B O D and get rid of some of the vacancies and not have to go through a comprehensive plan rewrite. And that would be completely appropriate to do in that manner.
So how would you feel about getting rid of the special exceptions for the PI district?
If that's what the board envisions to eliminate one layer of review, that's, that is fine. That, I don't really kind of have an opinion on that too much. The zoning hearing board, whether it's conditional use or special exception, that process for certain uses is appropriate to allow a little bit more oversight and reasonable conditions that the board could put on there. We've seen examples in the past of uses by conditional use that really no conditions were imposed on it. We've also seen through the one that the board just denied that the ability to say, you know what, it doesn't meet the parameter. So you, you have that option.
No, I'm sorry. I was being unclear. I, I don't mean remove the requirement that you obtain a special exception in order to create a, a use that is similar to subsection B of section two eighty sixty-eight. Instead, I'm saying remove subsection B altogether to eliminate those uses as permitted under the.
Sure. So we need to be careful. We are required by law to allow all possible uses somewhere in the township. So if we're just going to remove them from the PI district, we need to ensure that they are permitted some way, somewhere else in the township. And that could be by special exception. You know, we do have a provision that worked with solicitor's office on for the new and undefined uses. But I think it'd be a hard sell to completely scratch a use that was previously defined and no longer allow for it and then hope that it would fall under those other parameters. I think that sets up legal challenge. So we would have to, you know, see what those uses are, where they're specifically allowed or not allowed. If they're not allowed, then where are we going to direct those towards?
And those, those uses under two eighty sixty-eight B, those institutional uses. When we did the density modification, open space amendment, we did add an open space requirement for those uses. So there you know, that's something that's new. So you're not going to get a fully built out piece of ground. We also impose the stormwater design criteria on those uses. But Kevin's right, unless, unless we're providing for nursing homes, similar facilities somewhere else in the township. Then, you know, you sort of exposed the whole township for that use with an argument that you haven't provided for those uses and then you're dealing with a curative amendment.
Right. I'm, I'm looking at some of the special exceptions and I'm thinking that they're not appropriate for the PI areas where at least I'm most familiar. I'm thinking of the eastern lot. I would not want to see a medical or health center placed on the eastern lot. If or when the the existing development ends up falling through. I think that a nursing home or a similar health facility that was put there would just be too dense. I know that we have put open space requirements on there, but I still think that it's going to be too dense. These are all much higher traffic uses, much higher impact uses. I would guess, I don't know that for sure. And of course, it would depend on what the specific plan was with each one. But I think you're going to see a lot more trips. I think that you're going to see a change in the character of the neighborhood in that particular area that would be inappropriate.
Yeah, I agree with that assessment for the PI property over where.
One of the things the commissioner was talking about, sorry to jump in, but your zoning also, just like in general terms, it's your, you know, your dimensional regulations, your setbacks. Percent impervious on the lot. I mean, those are all things that do control what you build.
I was going to ask about impervious. Is, can we do something around that?
Absolutely. And again, we, we want to take a look at what we're, where we're at and where we want to go and see if there's reasonable changes. We don't want to get into the dilemma of zoning by exclusion where you're going to make it so difficult for the parcels to be developed. That you're prohibiting development. So it's, there's some nuances there that we would need to take a look at, not just take a number and previous coverage and slash it in half just because we're trying to avoid a certain type of development. You know, we would take a look at subsection B in the PI and say, okay, you know, take each individual use and see where it's allowed or take that whole section and say, okay, where would we want to see these? Is it appropriate in the C three district? Is it appropriate? And just, you know, do a wholesale swap of, you know, that into a, another district. But again, we want to make sure, as I talked about earlier, the unintended consequences, you know, are, are we okay with seeing a development like that in that area of the township? And where, what are the impacts to the surrounding areas? This trending road network and transportation and things like that. So there's a little bit of studies. That's why it takes so long when you're doing a comprehensive plan and a zoning rewrite. Because you're trying to make sure that there's the unintended consequences aren't unintended, that you kind of get as best as you can a picture of what you're anticipating to see.
But I ask, and it can be Kevin, if this is appropriate for you, please, if not, tell me who. Could you put together just a short memo for the board, letting us know if any of the special exception uses that are for the PI district are not included in our code somewhere else in the township? And if there are any that are not elsewhere, if there is some zoning district in the township that you think it would be appropriate to add it to, if we were going to remove it from PI.
So yes, I'm the appropriate person and yes, I will prepare that memo for the board's consideration.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Can I just ask a clarification question? So if it already exists in the township, it, does that take care of the the concern around, you know, we're prohibiting it. So if there's already a nursing home in the township, then we can say we already have got it. So obviously, so we could take it out of this?
I, I don't know if, if we have the use versus allowing for the use. I think we still need to allow for the use, even if there is, let's say, a nursing home elsewhere in the township. It's an existing non-conforming use. And we eliminate the use. I still think we need to zone for it. If you're saying, and I'll use, you know, do we allow single family homes in multiple districts? So we could remove single family homes from a district. Yes, we would be still covered there because it's permitted in other districts. In your case of a nursing home. If it's permitted in the, the PI, it's also permitted in, let's say, the CO, the commercial office district, then we're fine. We can eliminate it from the PI because it's still permitted in another district in the township. We just need to make sure if we're going to remove a use from a specific district that were covered by that use being allowed someplace else, whether it's by conditional use, by right or special exception, some other district in the township.
And since I see some people in the chat who are from the eastern neck of the woods, I'm going to ask you to clarify. Kevin, I assume that whatever we do to the ordinance, it will not affect the Valley Forge Plan that's already filed for a special exception.
Well, in terms of they have applied for a special exception. They have not received a special exception. They have not filed any sort of land development plan. I'll defer to John on what vested rights they have under their submittal. I don't know that changes that the board has recently adopted would or would not be, I'll defer to, to John on that.
Now, the I think it's nine seventeen in the MPC. Once you file a special exception or conditional use and for something that is a land development, you're vested as of that date under the zoning in place at that time. So as long as a special exception also constitutes a land development, you're vested. So, you know, I don't know, how long ago did they file that, Kevin?
They, I would have to take a look at the timing to see, did we have? And it was what I was referencing earlier about the pending ordinance law in terms of, did we have our open space advertised? There's the nuances to that. I don't know the timing of.
We did not yet.
Our, our code and our discussions of our ordinance amendment versus their filing. But one, one may have required the other or.
And they, they filed a special exception and then they're just sitting on it. They're not moving it forward.
Correct.
Boy, that's
Why it's up for planning commission. Or I'm sorry, up for zoning hearing board to make a decision on it, whether they're going to continue the extension or not.
Right, right.
Yes, that was something that I flagged very early on with the indefinite extension and I was concerned about.
And when did they file the special exception, how long ago, how long?
I want to say March, February, March, I think it may have been March. And then there was an extension, they were going to get on planning commission. Then they got continued from that and then in the letter, I think George Brosman had, who's representing them, had indicated that there's an indefinite extension. And then I've been pushing to get that on an agenda because I don't think that that's appropriate.
Well, developers do that. To avoid things that maybe are coming down the road. But zoning hearing board is supposed to have a hearing within sixty days, so. You know, they can certainly keep it moving. I mean, the other thing the board might want to think about, I mean, Kevin's going to look at the uses. The township did a fairly significant rewrite of the P L O. When Penn Medicine came in, you could just take the P I district. And if you, you know, not without a comp plan, without a total rewrite and just update the P I district. You'd be dealing with all the uses, including all the universities in the P I district. But you could take a look at the uses, you could take a look at the area and height regulations, you could take a look at setbacks. You know, all of that would be in play instead of piecemealing it, you could do it that way. If you wanted to do that, you could look at impervious. There's a lot of, there's a fair number of regulations here, special regulations two eighty dash seventy. That apply, there's some buffer requirements in this chapter. And then there's a provision that deals with institutional long range development plans. You know, that may or may not need to be revised, but the basic zoning criteria, buffers, setbacks, yards, et cetera. You know, you could just tackle that.
I like that idea. How would we go about that, John, is that again, you know, would we want some public? It'd be a public process, we'd want some public involvement.
Absolutely, and I think you would bring a planner in to do it. We had planners, I don't know, Kevin, did we have more than one planner for the P L O?
Yeah, well, that that went through so many iterations. Township had a planner, developers had planners, counter developers had planners, we had more planners on that than I remember.
Yeah, there was planners, 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 but.
Yes.
Township could definitely retain a planner just to look at these lands, you know, existing. I mean, it would include Villanova, it would include all the P I districts. And just bring it up to current standards, which is, you know, what was done with the P L O. Not everyone was happy with that, but you know, that was comprehensively revised because of the Penn Medicine project. I'd still bring a planner in, just.
Fairness to the planner, they're going to want some direction from the commissioners as to what they're looking at changing it to. If you just give them carte blanche, they're going to take forever to come up the plan back. They're, they need some sort of direction as to, you know, we want to tighten things up, we want to loosen things up here, tighten things up there. Those things are great, we'd probably put this out for bid as in an R F P. To give that some direction so that we are comparing apples to apples when the bids come in.
Would that be a little more manageable and then, you know, I. I mean, I would like to to do that and then I think at this, can we concurrently start to look at the process of the comprehensive plan? I don't want that to fall off. You know, off the radar while we pursue this, but maybe we can do some things in the immediate with that. And then. You know, continue to work on the comprehensive plan or pick that up as soon as we finish this, but at least have started that process.
Ultimately, I think something of magnitude that the the comprehensive plan is going to be is definitely a budgetary issue. While we're talking two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. You know, we're not nearly in that ballpark for a rewrite of the the P I district regulations. But it's still be a hit to the budget, so it was an unbudgeted expense. You know, do we want to look at that for this year or budget the P I for twenty twenty two? And then beyond for twenty twenty three possibly or later in twenty twenty two for the comp plan update. But you're you're probably a nine to twelve month process, I would think. Again, depending on how deep you want to get in with the public participation, how many meetings for an ordinance amendment for the the P I. Just looking at what we did for the P L O, the the previous P I district, how long that took. The Garrett Hill one, I think that was in the vicinity of two and a half to three years. To get the the Garrett Hill ordinance ultimately adopted, so there are some, definitely some time that is needed to get these done the right way.
We've been going for about an hour before we have public comment, do we have any final questions or comments from the board or staff?
Well, I just want to make sure, so have we, have we consensus on asking Kevin to? Go out, you know, start to put together an R F P, what it would look like to work, you know, to rework the P I. So, okay, I just want to make sure that, okay.
Yeah, I'd be interested in a memo in the short term on how we could deal with the special exceptions, but definitely I'd like to see an R F P for something longer term. I'm sorry, at least I interrupted you, I didn't mean.
No, 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 that's fine, I just.
So the R F P would be strictly dealing with the P I update, the update the P I regulations.
That's kind of what I heard. Yes.
Just making sure.
I just want to make sure I'm right, like I heard it too.
Okay.
I know there were, sorry, Fisher, a few years back, I believe that, I don't recall the name of the planning firm. Charlie Schmel was the name of the planner that we had starting to look at some of those things, it was in and around the time I think we did. The Villanova C I C D ordinance as a result of the Villanova project. So that, you know, I know that there was some groundwork done on that already. I don't recall off the top of my head where we ended up landing with that, other than it may have just stopped in planning commission at that point.
Well, quick question, are you on Commissioner Veraskey?
Oh, yeah, please.
Okay, so Kevin, I guess in your expert opinion, so you think that it's okay? To go just revisit the P I without looking at everything comprehensive or should it all be done at once?
Well, if there's the, it doesn't need to be all done at once, ideally you address the ordinance as one complete ordinance. Because there are a lot of interchangeable parts that affect one another. If there's an immediate concern that we can address, then we do that through just the P I district regulation. I will always champion for a complete comprehensive rewrite of the zoning code. Because there are some archaic provisions in there that conflict with each other, so we're left with trying to figure out. What is the overriding one, ultimately the tie goes in favor of the the landowner, so we sometimes. Have to make decisions that are contrary to popular and and sound planning. But that's just through the conflicts of the code.
So can they be done in tandem with the stress being get the P I done first?
Well, I think as you are going through the P I process, again, there's going to be a public participation process. It could be very complicated running two public participation processes simultaneously, one for the comp plan. One for the P I, it can be done, it's just days and dollars, night meetings and trying to fit stuff into the schedule. And then kind of a saturation point of the the public and what you're trying to maybe throw too too much at them. It may be easier to digest one at a time. But yeah, you can absolutely start, there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be done on the the comprehensive plan and and background studies before. The legit, real public participation occurs. There are steering committees that have to be established in a sense of where we want to go and review of of the existing documentation. So there's a fair amount of background work that needs to be done, that can be done while, you know, the P I district is actively going through the. Public participation process.
Okay, and then one more question, so you're saying that basically there's not that much. So when you're, there's not that much overlap, so when you're looking at P I, maybe residential, maybe commercial. So when you do look at P I verse and how that relates to commercial and residential, there's not a significant amount of overlap where. It doesn't make, you know, where it makes sense or doesn't make sense to break up the. The zoning and how you look at it.
I hate to give a specific on that because there are provisions in there that until you go through line by line, oh, I forgot that that intro related with that. You know, just for example, that you have for parian buffers that tie across the board. Sign regulations, you know, building heights are very specific to the districts as our previous coverage. But there are special regulations that sometimes intertwine parking being one of them, you know, how do we calculate parking? There's not a parking standard for universities or schools, so we look at the individual subuses, we look at gathering areas, the stadium. You know, classroom spaces, cafeteria spaces, and we add up those individually, it's again, it's an archaic way of doing it. So there are some things that do cross, but it's not to the extent that's anything major.
But there are. I'm just just from my, yeah, from my standpoint with the C I C D as well as the Garrett Hill overlay. Where you look at different height, different parking restrictions, different height restrictions, you have. Four or five, I think five different. Zoning in in a, maybe an eight hundred square foot radius. I kind of throw my hands up and shrug at that, as well as what happens and how that relates to other commercial and. Commercial that is planned, that is planned, planned institutional commercial, like having a restaurant at Villanova. Or something along those lines, and I don't know, that's just we know what we know in two thousand twenty one, but things go in light speed, so. When it comes to development, those are really my questions and concerns, so thank you.
Okay. Public comment, do we have any comment from the attendees in the meeting? Mr. Blackney, you are up.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for the opportunity to comment, 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 I'm getting some feedback, so, but I'll surprise. And allowing us to participate in your process here. It'll be great to have a comprehensive plan, I should point out, I live on Walnut Avenue in Ward one. I have served on the planning commission and and I am in the business, so I understand a little bit about this. I have a really simple question. In Ward Ward, we have a P I that is, that is going, there's, they're trying, they're maybe, maybe going to be R two zone. And I don't want to comment one way or the other, whether or not it's a good plan or not, bad plan, that's not why I'm calling. My question is, if you go from a P I to an R two zoning. Does that create a precedent for the other P I areas to be redeveloped to R two in the in the future?
Legal precedent, no.
So what you're saying is that if a developer comes forward and says, I want to develop, let's say Presbyterian Children, Children Bay. In R two, the plant, the commissioners can say, can say no, and they will win in court.
Correct.
That developer, okay, thank you very much for your answer.
I've been asked that question a lot about this development in particular, I think it is fair to say that. Informally, the board could get into the habit of, we just do this, but. I mean, obviously I defer to John, we're not required to.
I mean, legislative decisions are legislative, they're going to stand on their own. If someone comes along and says, well, you did it for them, you have to do it for me. You don't have to, that's not binding, it's not a legal precedent. Will a developer make that argument? Sure. You know, because that's what developers do. You did it over here, you should do it for me over on the other side of the township, but it's not something that. There's any kind of credible legal argument that that can be made on that scenario, so. The board can only say no.
Excuse me for interrupting you, you're you're a hundred percent confident that the township will win in court on that issue?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Winters, you are up.
I would just like to reinforce the need for a comprehensive land use plan, I think I've mentioned it probably. Numerous times in the last decade, and I think it's about time we really did attack that issue. I think it approach, you know, it impacts everything we do. The second thing I would like to reinforce is the notion that was raised here today about having. Some aspect of a township applicable for every use, I was wondering if we have an industrial use within Radnor Township. Because I'm concerned with this reliability station that's going to be put in. Our neighboring district, if we're going to be having some issues of some perhaps compressor stations or significant pipeline developments. That will be going through Radnor Township that will require some kinds of extraordinary accommodations.
Commissioner, I can take that and then John or Steve can follow up. There are industrial type uses that are defined or are allowed in in the various codes and C three would be the first district, I think. I could point to where there's some manufacturing that had to look specifically at the district to to define the exact uses. But if somebody wanted to come in and say, hey, you don't allow for this use because I just created it and it's special and you don't allow for it. I mentioned earlier, we have that new and undefined use provisions that puts, you know, basically. An applicant would come in, make their claim, I have the opportunity as zoning officer to review their use. Determine if that use meets any of the current defined uses in the township. If not, then I have to find where it's similar and then there's specific districts in that ordinance amendment that we have. That then channel that development type, so residential goes to one place, commercial goes another. Industrial, semi-industrial go to another district. So they're already predetermined where somebody trying to make a claim of this is a new use that you don't allow for. That's what the importance of getting that ordinance amendment done, I think it was two thousand twelve timeframe, shortly after I came on board and. Had the opportunity to review the codes, noticed that that deficiency. So we are protected in that manner, now if you're talking about a utility company coming in under the P U C and doing something. I will defer to John as to what they would or wouldn't be subject to.
Well, the P U C application is a whole different animal, so. I mean, I I can't speculate based on what I just heard as to what would happen. You know, those types of facilities that were just mentioned typically are not put in dense residential neighborhoods. So, but other than that, the P U C up to a point gets a pass from a lot of typical zoning regulations. Or utilities get a pass, they get approval from the P U C and they don't always have to comply with local zoning.
Thank you, John, and I would suggest then that we need some probably stronger light and noise restrictions put in if we don't have, if we don't have any other controls. As we put in ordinances, because I think light and noise are two areas where we do have some. Options that would be significant in terms of maintaining the quality of some of our lives.
Roberta, yeah, I I agree with you, but they're, they're on the book, they're just, they're just not enforced.
Well, we maybe need them reexamined, maybe they need to be stronger and also perhaps considered as an enforceable option.
Great.
Basically, on what I've heard and seen happen in neighboring areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comment? Steve Mercini, your hand is up. You can just tell us stuff if you want to.
It's inadvertent, thank you, Commissioner.
No problem.
I don't believe that.
Ms. Tmola, you are up next.
I'm really happy that you are discussing a comprehensive plan again. I feel like it's an urgent thing to happen in the township. I've lived here for a long time. I've seen things change. I think the Lisa's hesitation to use the word control is good. And I think the way we should look at it is to shape the development, not control the development. And I think that we need we need to address it as a whole. And I understand your urgency for PI. But I think we need to address the township as a whole. Because if you just in focus on the PI, then we end up with things having to remesh again. I think the best thing to do would be to hire a planner to guide you before you even get started on whether it's PI or the comprehensive plan, somebody that knows what they're doing to give you an overview of which way to go, somebody to give you direction. And the right, the right speed and the right direction to go in with a comprehensive plan and the township planning in general. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no additional hands raised, I can move to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. See you guys in a week or so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.